All right, good evening, everyone. Ordinance Committee Chair Allen Llewellyn calling our meeting to order at 6:00. And I'm looking to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from our special meeting of November 27, 2023, the budget workshop of March 20, 2024, and then the public hearing and special meeting that was held on April 29 of 2024.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Widdam. Any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item two, our new business items referred to from the town council. As we start with item 2.1, I think we should have an understanding that we're kind of bringing this item up for discussion. We may or may not get to a point of passage tonight, but as we have our safety director, Larry Ciccarelli, and our police chief, McNeil, here with us, I'd like to at least get the questions for them taken care of this evening. So for purposes of discussion, I will be looking for a motion to approve this item.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelia. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Freey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the motion really should be to send this back to council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you for that correction. Mr. Aurelia, you're comfortable with the motion as restated?
I am.
And you as well, Mr. Freey. Thank you, both. Thank you, Town Attorney Florrick. Okay, any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously, and we are open for discussion on this item. No, oh, we just approved it? Okay.
Yeah, you had a motion which was restated in a second, and now you should have discussion on that motion as restated.
Okay, discussion on the motion. So, that's, that's, my, so, do we need to rescind the vote, or?
In the same meeting, you can reconsider that motion.
So, does there need to be a motion for reconsideration?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Ms. Aurelia.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. All those in favor of reconsideration signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously, and can we now move into discussion?
Now you have to restate the motion as revised.
And, and then discuss without the vote? Okay, I'm a little out of practice here. So is there a motion to send this ordinance to the town council with favorable recommendation?
So moved.
I'll, I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Aurelia and Ms. Gibson, and now we are open for discussion on the matter.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Sheik.
Thank you so much. At town council, we had asked, just for a brief overview, I'm happy to see Chief McNeil and Larry Ciccarelli here from Public Safety. I'd love to hear from both of you, just a general review of what this is, and your thoughts, how it will be implemented, et cetera, just the summary.
Okay, so, red light cam was approved by the state several months ago. The first rollout will be all school safety zones, so that's the first phase one. Phase two will go to high-traffic accidents areas like Main and Warner Hill, we have Lordship Boulevard, Barnum and Main. After 18 months, prior to the, 18 months after, we have to make a report back to state to show that we had some kind of improvement, which would be less accidents and more people abiding by the speed. So, again, the first phase of this would be all school zones. We did a preliminary traffic count. We have 8,000 violations on Nichols Ave by Nichols School. And by Franklin School, there's running about 6,000. But the traffic on Nichols where they threw us, it was 160,000 cars over a five-day period. So all these studies are done in five days. So once the studies are completed, once we get our ordinance completed, then we have to put a package with the travel study, we submit to the Connecticut DOT for approval, and they then look at our traffic data, our accidents, and then they either approve or not approve it. We can't go within a quarter mile of Bridgeport, so everything has to be away from that. That's because it's considered economic problem area, so we gotta keep away from that. So that's a quarter mile from pretty much all along Bridgeport. That's pretty much in a nutshell.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief McNeil. So just a couple of questions for further understanding. When you refer to school zones, if you could just clarify, some of the school zones, like in my district, Wilcoxen, there's no currently existing traffic light right in front of the school, it's East Main Street and Wilcoxen, and then Main Street and Wilcoxen. So could you just give an example of how in that particular school zone, because that reflects other school zones throughout town, of how the traffic cameras would be essentially helpful to mitigate this being in the school zone?
It would be speed and stop sign. So like Wilcoxen School, if you look at that, you got the stop sign there, so it would be speed. So it would be place some distance. And all these areas have to have, you have to have warning signs 100 to 110 feet prior to the camera. So that would be attached to a stop sign and speed only. There's other that go to, does the lights speed? That would be like Barnum and Main. Up on Second Hill Lane, Second Hill Lane area on Nichols, that would be speed and light. Now we get down to Brabridge Ave. Brabridge Ave is a lot of speed there. So that would be just speed, and that could be put like Brabridge over by Success or Brabridge and Emerald, and that would speed only. They're dual cameras, LPRs.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you, Chief McNeil. So, again, Wilcoxen, the stop sign that's their beacon, I'm assuming, because on top of the stop sign, the additional cameras that would have to be placed in wherever it is said school zones, or if it's speeding traffic for other areas of town. The monitoring that takes place in that camera, is it a type of camera that is 360 degrees, or is the camera just facing the actual street?
It doesn't look beyond the car. It's just looking at a car, and you're getting a picture of the plate and possibly the driver. That's it. None of this, and if there's no violation, it can't be stored. You can't store any of this. After a violation is found and you pay it, in 30 days, it has to be expunged. If you issue a fine and it doesn't get paid, you have one year to keep it in for collection purposes. And if it's after a year of the violation, then it's expunged. So you can't keep any of this data.
Can I ask one more follow-up question with the?
Sure.
Thank you. So, one of my concerns was additional cameras that, don't get me wrong, I think that we absolutely need better traffic mitigation, especially in our school zones with speeding, but additional cameras that would then be placed either right in front, like Wilcoxen School, and those cameras being on 24 hours a day, and the residents that live directly across the street. So how?
They're only taking a picture of a violation. So if you're speeding, if you're coming under-
So it's a sensor?
It's a sensor.
Okay.
So you have to, it's 10 miles over the speed limit. So if you're coming down pretty hot down Wilcoxen at 40, 42, 43, it's going to take a picture of your license plate and possibly the driver. That's it. And it's, it's not above that. It's looking right at the roadway only.
Thank you for clarifying that, I think, because that was one of my main concerns.
Good, Ms. O'Neill.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question in terms of, will that system be able to be utilized, like, in, on other streets? I mean, I know right now you're not going to do that, but I'm saying, in terms of, like, in my area, like Johnson Academy, you know, some of the residents have complained about people speeding.
Yep.
And I know we had spoke before, and, you know, we're, you're not in favor of speed bumps, you know, so just whatever technology we need to utilize, you know, to, you know.
Yes. If the data provides that, if there's enough violations, then yes. But we have to provide the study. We haven't got there yet, but that is on the list.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Thank you all for being here and doing this. So I live in, and I am in the fourth district, and so there's quite a lot of traveling there and speeding on side roads. We're doing these on main roads and in school districts. So on Burrit Avenue in Barnum, would, would anything be able to be tracked if the cars are speeding onto Burrit or in the neighborhood? Like, how does that happen?
Yes. These cameras are a sensor, so it's going to give us data, what we have now, we put the speed trailer, gives you speed, time of day, and so we'll know, we can monitor what's happening there. What we've seen, or what we've seen in other areas, is that once you put these cameras in place, it kind of controls the side streets too, because people are not speeding. So they start slowing down because they know it's there, and they don't go screaming through the neighborhoods.
So the radius kind of, what does it go at? Like, the sensor goes out?
The sensor's only looking at the roadway. Like, if I put one on Barnum and Main, it's one camera. The reason why this company that we're using is, there's other companies, but they want to put, like, two different boxes across. This is one sleek little system, and it catches all the lanes.
Okay.
So if you come up and you don't have a, you can't turn right, and you turn to right, it's going to be a violation. If you go through that light, it's going to be a violation.
Okay.
So it's one camera just looking at that intersection. You're not going to see anything above that.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was my question, and then you already addressed information being stored. So it's only stored for a certain amount of time, and it's not private information?
Only a violation, and then, once it's paid, it's 30 days, it's expunged.
Okay.
Even if you don't pay it, they, we can only, well, we can't, but the company can only, the vendor can only keep it for one year, then it's expunged.
Okay, so this company doesn't share the information anywhere else?
You cannot, no, by law, you cannot.
All right, thank you.
And you need a search warrant, subpoena by court to get that info. But if there's no violation, there's nothing stored.
Okay, great, thank you.
Let me go to Mr. Freey first. Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. Chief, thanks for taking the time to be with us this evening. I just had a couple of questions about, along the line of equity and social justice, and I wanted just to understand, you explained to me what phase one was with the school safety zones. I wanted to get a little bit more into phase two, the high-traffic areas. So what safeguards are going to be in place to prevent racial profiling and ensure fair enforcement across all demographic groups?
Well, cameras don't racial profile, they just look at the violation. But we're not, we're looking for areas that have high accident zones, like Main and Warner, Main and Warner Hill, that's a big spot for us. Barnum and Main, Lordship Boulevard, Lordship and Honey Spot, those are big accident areas. So that's the, all we're looking at, and we have to get approval from the state DOT. So we're going to have to justify that, that we have this accident problem here, and this is going to stop that. Then we have to report back to prove that it's actually doing that. So, you know, we're not looking to roll this out all across town right off the bat. We're going to work through this, because it's a, it's a new technology for us. It's elsewhere, but we need to figure out our processes and how to make that, you know, seamless. So, like, if someone gets their car stolen, and they report it, they shouldn't be getting a ticket in the mail. So we're going to be able to avoid that locally. Same thing if you take a car without permission. You come in, car was taken without permission, you do a report, we avoid it. So you don't get the ticket in the mail, so we're trying to get away from that. This is not targeting anything, it's just trying to get people to slow down, it's like, we have a big problem, not just here, everywhere, certainly on the highways. But, you know, when they, we, the measurements that we're looking at, we definitely have a problem, and we have to address it. And it, just the amount of it in our school zones was really shocking to me. Certainly Nichols Ave, that really threw me. I didn't expect to see that, that many violations. Franklin School, too.
Thank you, just another follow-up question. So I just wanted to understand, what measures will be taken to mitigate the financial burden on, of fines on low-income individuals and families? So is there any type of programs?
There is not. I can only tell that the fee structure is $50 for the first fine, the second is 75. There's a $15 surcharge on each, each one, so it's actually 65 the first, and then it'll go to 90 for the second. So there is an appeal process, so you can appeal it, and we're setting up that processes. It won't be a police officer, but probably more like a civilian appeal. And because we have the ability to do it ourselves, if someone has that kind of burden, they can explain it, talk, you know, we could do something on our end, too, to avoid it. Like, listen, this is not to burden people, that's the last thing we want to do. You know, and getting a ticket in the mail is, is not great. I know, because my daughter's got them, unfortunately. So, but I, I've been through this before with Red Flex solution, you remember the cameras on the bus, school buses? It was just a, it was a disaster, because people were getting in the mail a nearly $600 ticket. And it was, and the, the process that they had, they just trying to churn the money. That's not what this is about. This is, everything's data-driven to see that we're actually controlling the speed and making compliance with our traffic laws. That's it.
And this will be my last question. Thank you so much for your responses so far. If we have a reoccurring offender that continually gets these citations or violations, how would we try to deter that type of behavior for those reoccurring?
Recurring people?
Yeah.
Did it happen? You know, this'll change their behavior, I would assume, because you keep on getting these fines. But one thing we did in the, in the program itself is, if you go through, if a police officer already tickets you, you're not going to get a ticket. So you don't, you don't get another ticket, because you already got a ticket for that. If you go through a light and you generate a ticket, for the next few, 15 minutes or so, you're not going to get another ticket. You may go through another light. It's not to pile up the fines, it's really just to change the behavior. I know if it was my household, and my daughter was getting all these tickets, I think we'd have a problem. So, I mean, it comes down to that. And, and if you get a bunch that your, your kids are all driving, that they really shun it, and you really, you gotta do something different, you know?
Thank you.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yeah, I'm a follow-up, through you, Mr. Chair. To finish up on what the councilman Freey was saying, my, my question is, because you said after 30 days or X amount of days, the ticket is expunged, and so if somebody purposely, you know, continues with that vein, not paying, you know, is there any repercussion?
Yes, that's, we're, we've got to look at our process of how to do that. We could go to a collection agency, but we also have the ability to do in some, an ordinance to actually technically boot your car. So there's things that we could do. But I could say this, a lot of our traffic is from out of town. It's not from town. I mean, it's coming down the corridor, it's coming in from Shelton, it's coming in from Milford, it's coming in from Bridgeport. See, we, we know there's a lot of out-of-town traffic coming in, because we have the Walmart, that's right here. So, a lot is, you know, we're going to have to go to a, a collection agency, really. And that's the next part of this, we got to go talk to collection agencies.
Are there any further questions for Chief McNeil or Larry Ciccarelli? Good, Ms. Gibson.
I'm not sure, but through you, Chair, if this is a question for you, Chief, but the equipment is leased, is that correct?
No.
Oh, it's-
Well, you know, I guess, I guess that's not a, in a way, it is, yes. We're not paying for it. The, their fee, the $15, is, is going to pay for it. And if we have something, we're, we're finding out that the town has to have a cost to it, we'd probably remove it, because then it's not, there's not enough of a problem there to justify something like this.
Okay, I was just kind of wondering if it was ours to own, whether or not there was warranty or not?
It is their-
That's down the road?
It is their equipment, they're, they're going to hook for it, they're, they got to maintain it, and they got to, you know, anything goes wrong, they got to fix it.
Thank you, thank you.
But there's no cost to the town of Stratford.
Mr. Freey?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just had another question. Regarding collaboration with the community on this specific issue, we, I see it as public safety as well. I do think that there are speeding concerns that really do need to be addressed on our, some of our side streets. I live on Swanson Avenue, and it's a boulevard, especially from 7 to 9 o'clock. So I just wanted to say, how will we be, how will the determined authority collaborate with local enforcement, law enforcement, community organization, and other stakeholders to ensure that the program is a success?
When we say success, I guess you got to define it. I mean, I, it would be success if we, if we see declining tickets. I mean, that's, to me, is the success. But there's a huge part of this is going to be a media wave, because nothing's going to be implemented until we put this out and educate everybody, you know, where the locations are, what, what you could get, what the ticket looks at, and what your rights are to, if you want to appeal it or whatever. So I, I think it's going to be information getting out to the public to understand that it's out there, and it's, you know, you, you got to be careful, and you got to slow down. And if someone in your family is, is speeding, you're going to have to do something about it. I mean, we just can't have it. But I think the, the, the public information that we get out there will, will have an impact on people understanding, it's not just going to be here, it's going to be everywhere. I mean, Stanford's going, Milford's going, Trumbull's going, it's just going to be all over, so. And as you know, our highways need it more than anything else.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Just to echo a lot of the other sentiments, I think it's really great that the focus of this is on public safety. It is needed. One of the questions I had last time had to do with how the 30-day window for information being scrubbed interacts with repeat offenders? So is the system still able to at least store a plate, so we know how many infractions that plate is racking up, or is that scrubbed? Is all of it scrubbed?
It's gone. It's gone. This is not to identify people, the program's not for identifying people. Like I said, it's, it's, it's just going to mail it, you pay it, 30 days, it's gone, so.
So that means if they get, if they have an infraction once, they wait 35 days, they have another infraction, they'll be fined as a first-time offender?
No. That, it's, it'll identify that plate, not the, not the owner or anything, that's, there's only one information, but that's not-
So it does, it does keep track of how, that that plate at least is a prior offender?
Correct. And then, that's it, you get the, like, the $150 freebie, technically, I guess you could call it.
Okay, so that's, but, so another, the system is logging that by license plate, if you, if that license plate has previously offended?
Only for the second offense, and then it's gone.
Okay, well, right.
Because, because after, what you get it wants, it's, this is nothing, no humans are touching this. This is all computerized.
And, yeah.
So no one can go in and look at that data.
Okay. And you already addressed, I, I thought I'd heard in public safety, there was a monthly fee associated with the cameras, but you're saying that's being absorbed entirely by the, the added fees on. The cost that we do have on our end, though, would be the traffic studies, and we are the ones, the third-party vendor is going to basically be sending us the reports of these infractions, right? It's going to be a report with a picture of the infraction that somebody in the town, either police department or town hall, has to verify and then send out? That's what-
No, it's all automated. And, and we're not paying for the traffic studies, the company's paying for the traffic studies.
Okay, so they're, they're covering the traffic studies as well? So the company is going to be mailing directly?
Yeah, it's all automated, due to mail.
Okay, I just wanted, I'm going to review a little bit, and I don't know if anyone else has a question, but it sounded like in here, the wording of, of our law, maybe it's because of the template we got from the state, is different than what's being described here, just so that we're aware. It describes a process where, I just want to make sure, it's something we have to clear up perhaps as an ordinance committee, that I think the wording of this ordinance is saying that the town or police department is going to be the one to receive the reports, verify them, and we're responsible for them.
No, we have to prove, prove it to get the infraction sent. We, a police officer, or, it doesn't have to be a police officer, but somebody has to go in and look at the violation.
Right.
Click approve, and then go to the company, then they mail it out.
Okay, so it's sent to us electronically, or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, everything's done on a computer.
Okay. Do we have a sense of, like, how much time that, you know, is that going to be a full-time position, or is that just going to be?
No, it's not going to be a full-time position.
Okay.
Again, this is new, but it's not going to be a full-time position. And if anything, it would start by a police officer, and then we'd look to bring in a civilian.
So long-term, your hope would be, well, the civilian review board would be, especially for appeals, right?
No, this is just to prove the ticket itself, to prove a mailing of a ticket.
Okay.
So you're looking at a computer screen, it's going to pop up, it's going to show the violation, you can verify everything with the, and then you click yes, and it generates an infraction.
Okay, and another question through the chair, the, it's, so the cameras, I know the infractions that we listed here are speeding and going through a red light, you said turning right on a red light counts as that, so we don't have something for catching somebody who's running a stop sign? Is that correct?
No, you could do that, yes.
Just by the speed, basically?
Wilcoxen Ave, we were talking about, that would be speed and, and stop sign.
Okay, the, the ordinance, again, the language in that, just to make sure, I think, is specifically mentioned, the, the two citations are 10 miles over or running a red light, so we might also want to clarify that to make sure it lines up.
Through you.
One second. Ms. Widdam?
Hi, through the chair. I know you said that it was all computerized and stuff like that. Are the sensors, do they need to be, like, recalibrated or anything like that?
They have to be certified, that is correct, yes.
And how often does that happen? Because what if they go out of whack?
Well, apparently, they, there's diagnostic data, so they'll get informed there's something wrong with it, and then they got to come out and fix it. And it's all on them, we don't touch that.
Ms. Gibson?
So based on what Chris was saying, and how you were saying about the infractions, recently, someone did a left turn in front of me at a light in Bridgeport. Would that be captured as well? I just-
They were, they were at a red light?
Yeah, we were.
And they turned through the light?
It was a one-way street, and they ran right in, in front of me and turned, left onto a side street.
Yes.
Okay, my brakes worked well, though, thank you.
Mr. Aurelia?
Yep, this is a, just a comment more than the question, but through the chair, I did give this information to people on the Public Safety Committee, but there's a, the state of Connecticut has a website dedicated to this program. It's the Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Device Program Overview. And if you look it up, it gives a very good, a lot of the questions that came up here tonight are covered by the state about how this gets, how this gets rolled out, the purposes of it, all of that. So I recommend that when you get a chance, you take a look at that website, it kind of explains everything the chief's going through here, too. All right, thanks.
Excellent. Mr. Green?
Especially thinking about the comments from Councilwoman Gibson, and thinking about that intersection in Lordship, can these cameras catch a car going the wrong way down the run, well, one-way and cite that?
I don't know, and I'm not sure if we could do that. I don't think they're set up for that. I'd have to check with the company, see if they-
But you know the intersection I'm talking about, sort of heading right into Lordship. It's a dangerous.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And that, you know, again, we don't want these everywhere. I think we got to be very precise of where we're going to put these things.
And so also, based on, again, I, I guess this would be a question for the town attorneys, if these cameras are, in fact, it sounds like citing, for instance, for a stop sign, and this ordinance specifically, as currently phrased, does not account for that specific violation, is that something we'd have to amend before passage to make sure this is all good to go?
The language in the ordinance was taken directly from the enabling legislation, so what's here is what authority exists pursuant to the state.
So what do we do if the cameras are catching something that's beyond that authority, then, such as a stop sign infraction?
Well, I think they, there's an appeals process built into this thing, and if a person appeals, it'll be decided by a hearings officer. appeals, it'll be decided by a hearings officer. I'm presuming the hearings officer, doing his or her duty, would review the possible defenses and would review the authority and issue a decision on that basis. Plus, additionally, it doesn't stop there. There is a, under law, a, the ability to appeal to the Superior Court. So, there are fail safes built into it.
But just say this, though. If, if, if a neighbor walked out and videotaped your car going through that stop sign, and they presented it to us for evidence, we can issue on that. So.
Mr. Refier?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I was thinking about portability, and I'm thinking that if this safety cameras are effective, and we see a downward trend in infractions in the specified zones that you will be identifying, is there potential to relocate those cameras to a different portion that we haven't seen that same downward trend happen yet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Glad?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Chief McNeil, thank you for coming today. I think one thing maybe you could help address with the stop signs and, and street, I think what you were saying before was that if a car's going a certain speed, they would have gone through, say, on Wilcox, and they would have had to go, they would not have stopped at the stop sign to then achieve, depending on where you put that camera, you would then be able to identify that, that as well. So, that sort of is the answer to how you would stop that, I think. Is that fair?
That's fair. So, yeah, that's true.
I just have one more.
Go ahead, Ms. Gibson.
We're speaking about cars and SUVs and all, but we all may have seen the infamous bikers, right? These dirt bikes. Do they have license plates, or would that, they would, that's not going to slow that down?
No, really. No, they don't. No.
All right. Thank you. I was hoping so. All right. Thank you.
It terrorizes.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Sheik.
Thank you. Thank you for the additional information to you and to Councilman Aurelia for referring the state website that you're referring to. If we could all get that, I think that that would be helpful. I just want to make sure that I understand. So, there, it sounds like there's funding from the state to pay for this service to be available for municipals throughout the state with the additional cameras and then the contract that the town would be essentially entering into. There's no contract fee, there's no initial fee that the town would have to be responsible for. I mean, it almost sounds like too good to be true, that this is a full system that will help deter, right, infractions and have better public safety.
Every location, they have to make $2,500 back for a month infractions. And what we're seeing is they're going to be beyond that. That's it.
And then, go ahead.
And if the costs, if we're not making that, we're going to move it.
Thank you for clarifying that. What was I going to ask? The, with having the cameras in place, does that detract from having patrols out on busy streets? Because you said it would either be one or the other, right? So, you can't get ticketed twice. So, if there's a police officer at a traffic intersection or wherever they're told to go, would the amount of cameras that the town have, would that alleviate police officers from having to be stationed in that area? Or?
No. No. It's their job. I mean, and what, you know, coming up that location, there's, you know, side streets and everything else. I mean, these are just major accident areas for us and certainly the school zones. But no, they still got to do their job. That's their job.
That makes me, thank you for answering that, because one of my main issues with this entire ordinance, whether it's Stratford or any other town, is that it's the owner of the vehicle that's being cited, right? Not the driver. So, versus, you have a police officer pull someone over, they can identify the person, and then that ticket gets issued. And that process could eventually go to their said driver's insurance company, and then that would affect their rates, et cetera, versus this is just, you know, monitoring, right, of some type of a system that we are hoping would deter traffic infractions in high-traffic areas or busy areas. That gives me peace of mind. And with the traffic studies, is there a list of traffic studies that already exist that we would be able to see that way? I'm sure we're all aware of where in our district we have very, a lot of concerns and questions from residents.
There is five so far that we have and more to come.
Would you be able to tell us where?
Yeah. So, we got Huntington at Benell School, southbound, northbound. Nichols, northbound, southbound at Brede and Nichols Elementary. Barnum at Franklin School. East and West, Barbridge Marina, Barbridge Emerald. Nichols Marina, Nichols Barbara. So, Nichols and Barbara and Marina, we had 7,500 violations. At Barbridge Marina, there was 8,100 violations over this, over a five-day period, by the way. So, those are the locations on so far. They're not all complete yet, because we still got to compile data.
And would you be open to taking, you know, suggestions or requests from said council people just as, to look into it, to say?
I would think, you know, through public safety, sure. I mean, but I think we've got to start small. We don't want to go, I'm really walking through this very cautious, cautiously, because I want to make sure we get our processes right, and we don't see where the problems, we're going to run into problems. I know. It's, it's just what happens. And see what kind of volume we've got to look at to make sure we're checking all these, make sure it's proper and accurate, and approve it. So, that's what we've got to work out on the inside. But yes, I mean, to answer your question, yes.
Thank you. And then, with the last question, and then with the civil review board, in the event of someone wanted to appeal, you know, if someone has issued a ticket by an officer, the town, the municipal does not get involved unless there's an accident, right? And then, they're notified. So, how would this particular process essentially protect said owner of the vehicle's information? Like, if someone did steal their car, or if you had someone in the household, or not in the household, take the car out to go get, I don't know, a gallon of milk or something, and they violate whatever the traffic rules are for that road, and there's a, you know, they're contesting it. So, in this process, if there's a civil review board of some kind, that person's information would be public. So, is there discussion of how to perhaps better deal with that to protect the owner of the vehicle's name information?
What's the appeal process is done? It's expunged. So, it goes to that point. But if you're getting in a car accident, the police are there, because you still need a police report, and we're going to issue the infraction. So, nothing's going to happen with the camera.
Okay. That is one example. Another one might be if you have people who live in the same household, and they just don't agree on anything, anything. And, you know, person B took person A's car. They're not seeing eye to eye, and it becomes something else, obviously. But they're not in agreeance with whatever the process is. So, then, the next juncture is they would have to come to town hall to go to the civil review board. They would.
Are you saying they're taking it without permission?
Pardon?
They're, they're taking the car without permission, then? Is that what you're saying?
They're taking, so the owner of the vehicle would contest, because they were not the person driving the car. It was someone else.
There's owner responsibility, but in your scenario, are you saying that person, that other person, are they taking the car without permission?
Correct.
Then, they're going to file a report, and then, there's no ticket issued.
Okay. Is that built into the ordinance that we have?
It doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be. We, if you're filing a police report that there's a, someone's taking your car without permission, that's a whole nother set of problems. And it has nothing to, you're not going to get, no one's going to get a ticket for that, because there's a police report unfiled, whether in our town or out of town. And we can easily verify that.
Thank you for clarifying that. The issue is if it ends up something that has to be contested, and they have to come down to town hall, to wherever the civil review board is, that.
Not if they're filing a police report. That's going to be voided by us. When we look at it, we're going to see it's proper, we'll void it.
So, it sounds like it's more of a case-by-case basis?
Correct.
Okay. My concern is, in the event that it has to be escalated to a point, in that situation, not valid, because you said it would be thrown out if there's a police report filed. If there wasn't a police report filed, and this was the juncture that the people involved had to go through, would their information still be, I guess, protected? Not published? Not publicized?
It has to be protected. We can't, it's not FOI-able. This information's protected. And then, after the, the appeal is done, if you pay the fine or if it's waived, it's gone in 30 days.
Thank you.
Good, Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, just one last comment. I, I think it's, it's, it's a good thing, because if, if somebody, if I've lent somebody my car, you know what I'm saying, I want to make sure that they're being responsible. So, even if I get the ticket, you know what I'm saying, I know that who I let use my car is not responsible. And then, I will take further action next time that person or stuff asks to use my car, you know? So, I think that's a good thing in terms of who you're lending your car to.
Mr. Refier, and then let's wrap this up. Through you, Mr. Chair. My last question. This is the installation timeline. So, what is the expected timeline from the proposal to actual activation once we approve this? And you guys submit your proposal to the state?
Well, if everything goes, you know, it gets approved, you're looking at 21 weeks. Till after the 30-day, it's 21, where it goes active in 21 weeks. And there's a month prior to that is education, social media, posting, and everything.
Going back to the education, would there be formal settings where community members could come to your new power facility, for example, and that you guys could talk about this? Or is there going to be more signage to be posted where these cameras will be?
It'd be signage.
Signage?
In, in social media and everything. But I guess, I'll talk to anybody. If anybody wants to, you know, meet and talk about it, I can explain it better.
All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Green?
This is something I brought up in public safety and in council, and I just want to make sure it's addressed. It's more on the town side than public safety. It says in the wording in here that the fines collected and raised are supposed to go either towards helping fund the program itself or helping with traffic safety and infrastructure. What is the plan on the town side to, is, is it going in the general fund, or will a separate fund be set up?
That's a question to me.
May I provide an answer?
I think it's, it's traffic safety. I think it would be the primary, but.
We could, we can put it in a restricted account for that reason. We have a lot of things that are like this, counselor, as you know, and we put them in different accounts so we can track it and see just how much money, revenue there is.
Okay. So, separate account. Thank you.
I only spend the money where you tell me to spend it. That's why we go through the budget.
Motion to move the question.
All right. Thank you, uh, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief McNeil.
Good. Good evening.
Okay. Do we need a second? Is there a second on the Mr. O'Neil motion to call the question? Okay. Motion, uh, motion fails for lack of a second. Mr. Glad?
No.
There was no second, so further discussion if anybody has any.
Not further discussion, then the item comes to a vote, or there needs to be a motion to table? Hearing? So, we can, we can call for the vote? Exactly. So, we are voting on the motion that's been made in second to send this to the council with favorable recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, I have two, two comments to make.
Thank you, Attorney Florrick. You may continue.
After this reached the, the council for the first reading, Chief McNeil and I had a discussion, and there are two items that need to be amended from what you have in front of you. The first item is Section 203-43, penalty for violation. And the last sentence of subparagraph A should be amended, because it's actually going to be the vendor that issues these citations after the review by the police department official or other employee designated by the traffic authority. So, that last sentence should read as follows. If after such review, the member or employee determines that there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation occurred, the vendor or such member or employee may issue by first-class mail a citation to the owner of such motor vehicle. So, it's, the vendor's got to get in there, because that's going to be the entity that's actually mailing the citations in the first instance. The Second Amendment goes to same, same Section 203-43, but down to subsection C. It should be amended to read as follows. Pursuant to Section 6.5 of the Code, a member or employee of the police department or other employee designated by the traffic authority shall apply to the citation clerk for a judgment assessing monetary penalties as set forth in 203-44 against the owner. And the reason for that is while the vendor is sending out the citation, thereafter, if that citation is not paid, and the town needs to go forward to, to collect it by, by getting a judgment, that's a civil process. And so, the vendor's not going to do that. That's where it will revert back to the police department or an employee to get the application to the citation clerk. Take it from there.
Attorney Florrick, if you wouldn't mind, in that section, if you would just repeat what the amended text is, I would greatly appreciate that.
Yes. I would suggest adding to Section C, the, the following. So, it should read, pursuant to Section 6.5 of the Code, a member or employee of the police department or other employee designated by the traffic authority shall apply to the citation clerk for a judgment assessing monetary penalties as set forth in Section 203-44 against the owner.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the ordinance pursuant to the comments of the town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Glad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Aurelia. Any discussion on it? Yes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Chair votes aye. Motion to amend carried unanimously. Now, motion to send the ordinance as amended to council with favorable recommendation.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Aurelia. Second by Mr. Refier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is item 2.2, an ordinance regarding Section 6-11 of the Code of the Town of Stratford. And so, looking for a motion to approve and send this to town council with favorable recommendation.
I'll move that.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelia. Seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I believe there was identified in our council meeting a, a need for a clarifying error, just, or where it says Section 6-11, it should be 6 dot, did Mr. Green do, oh, it's fixed.
Yeah. There was an additional point one in the prior.
Perfect. Okay. Very good.
Prior rating.
I withdraw that, then. Thank you.
Thank you for, I think, for resolving that, Mr. Glad. All of in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item 2.3, just an ordinance appropriating $22,956,515 for various public improvement and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2024, 2025. We're looking for a motion to approve and send to town council with favorable recommendation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Glad?
I move that we move item 2.3, an ordinance appropriating $22,956,515 for various public improvements and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2024, 2025, with favorable recommendation to the town council.
Thank you, Mr. Glad. Seconded by Mr. O'Neil. We are open for discussion on the item.
Ms. Sheik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Timmyak. If you could just walk us through how we landed at $22 million, almost $23 million for a bonding package. It's one of the largest packages for bonding that the council has had in years.
Good evening. Thank you for having us meeting tonight instead of next week, when I heard there wouldn't be a quorum. So, I appreciate us getting this done and having an ample opportunity to review all these projects. It is a, it is a larger package than we've had in the previous years. The items which are included in this proposal are ready to go. There are items that our town department heads have been working There are items that our town department heads have been working on throughout the course of the year, throughout a couple of years. There are expensive items in here, which we've listed, all of that equaled the 22 million dollars. I just want to clarify that it's 17 million dollars of capital improvement and 5 million dollars of equipment to come up with a 22 million. So I know that I have stressed that our, you know, our bonding window is usually between like 14 and 16 million, you know, we shoot for the, we shoot for the 15 million dollar in here, this year, our capital improvement is 17 million. And that, that has to do, basically pushing us over the, the threshold is the bridge project coming in at 2 and a half million dollars. Like I said, there are big-ticket items in here which are ready to go. And there's a lot of stuff in here, if you look at the actual, in the book, you can see that, you know, we have a lot more going on when you count in all the grants we have. So we have a total in this capital improvement project this year of, you know, essentially around 15 million dollars worth of projects we're going to be doing this year.
Thank you for giving us a brief synopsis. The 20, 22, roughly 23 million, and you broke it down, it was 17, and then 5 million of equipment versus projects. To get to that 50, it's also counting the 14 for WPCA? Just, just if you could walk us through how we're at 50?
So in the book, it counts 16 million for WPCA improvement, that's technically 17 million total for WPCA, that's made up part of that 50 million. We have 17.5 million for bonding, capital improvement, we have the equipment coming in at about 5 million dollars, we have a general fund amount of 147,000, we have 9.4 million dollars in grants, we have about 600,000 dollars in LOSEC. At that with the WPCA, we'll come in at 50 million dollars worth of projects this year. Now, I will also want to clarify that the WPCA, the WPCA committee will have to do its, its own separate approval for that, I mean, it's included in our plan, but when those projects are ready to go, Tom Hyde will bring it to the WPCA board for a separate vote. Now, knowing that the authorization is in the book, it's still, you have to have the WPCA approve that as well. So it gives a full accurate picture of what we're intending on doing. And then I have mentioned to a lot of you in our personal one-on-one meetings when I've gone over the projects that, you know, there's always a surprise or two in the fall when we find out a grant from the state of Connecticut has been made up and we have an opportunity to leverage, you know, a 60% reimbursement for a school HVAC or, you know, a roof project, which we weren't doing, we weren't planning. As the state or the federal government looks to clear their books at the end of the year, there's probably going to be one or two items which we may want to take advantage of and will certainly propose to the council at the time, which, you know, won't be included in the book, for a program we couldn't imagine was coming along, but that's seemed to be the trend the last couple of years, as they look to spend down their, their money.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, through the, so thank you, Mr. Timniak, for clarifying through the chair. So to be clear, it sounds like of the 50 million that we're spending on capital improvement and these projects, about 10 million is grants and the rest is borrow. Is that?
No. Yeah, so the WPCA isn't, that doesn't factor into the, our bond rating, so that 17 million dollars is.
Borrowed, but on?
Yeah, so they're an enterprise fund, so it's, it's their own bucket, which would be set by the WPCA rate.
Okay.
And then the 10 million of the grants, which would be approvable here, is also not borrowed, so the, the borrow, the borrow amount, which the bank really looks at is the 17 million dollars, because that's the 20-year bond number in the book for the town.
Okay, thank you. One of the other things I noticed going back in, in other years is, obviously, this may not be the only time that ordinance is meeting to approve bonding for a year, so like you said, other unexpected things can come about. So just to understand, our target, like you, you set for this board for the first, for this ma- major round is around 15 million, and we're a little over that. There are things, like you said, the bridge or other stuff where we may have to come back in later this year for additional borrowing?
The bridge is a unique one because I've, I've, we're submitting an application, as I said, to try to get about six, six and a half million dollars worth of state funding. We've had several meetings with the state regarding the bridge. We were told to apply for the CIF grant this Friday for, my fingers are crossed, I would love to do that. I did put the 2 and a half million dollars in the book because I'm hoping, I mean, I know that the CIF grant's going to come with a match, I don't know what that match percentage is going to be yet. My hope is that 2 and a half million dollars covers the, the match, because I was thinking, you know, a third would be a nice match I would take, maybe 20%. I don't know what the state's going to do, and, and they don't know what they're doing yet either, because the formula's not set, it's, it's project-based, so, you know, I didn't want to overplay our hand in there, but, you know, full disclosure, the bridge is going to be about 7 million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Good, Mashik.
Mr. Timniak, next year, do you have a projected forecast of, would we be dealing, would the town be dealing, the council be dealing with a bond package that's this large?
Well, if you look at, you know, the year 2026, in the capital improvement plan here, it shows right now 29 million dollars for next year. I mean, that's going to have to get whittled down, it's certainly not going to get approved at 29 million dollars. The thing is, I have to, I have to put all these projects in there, because when John Casey goes out, it has to be part of our plan. So when we go and apply for a grant or we go for, so there's things in here, we're, we're indicating we're going to fund, but the reality is like, there's really expensive stuff we're in here, which we're hoping to leverage the federal side or the state side to get that funding for. I, I mean, it's, it's what every town does, every town's out years are way more expensive because they're working on, they're working on putting the project together. So just to get the grant to do the planning studies for some of these projects, we have to indicate that hell yeah, it's already part of our five-year plan, which is why, you know, the, you know, our five-year total's 229 million dollars, and 2029, it's a 1 point, or 126 million dollars worth of projects. So it, it all gets like funneled down, so picture the top of the funnels is big and those are our out years, and then it, it gets down to what we actually have to do. It shows we're on top of things, we have, we have our stuff together. Yeah.
Ms. Gibson first, and then Mr. Green.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So I'm new to district, for everyone knows that, as far as the projects that are going on, and one of them was the 100,000 dollar grant with, for that Hyde Park. Was that, is that included in this particular budget, or is it something on the side, because, or has it been used? I, I just trying to figure out.
Good, Mayor Huike.
Councilwoman, you and I talked about how to reach out to the community and find out what they wanted for that money, remember that? And so we wanted to have a community meeting, and you had already spoken with some of them, they didn't want a lot of the things that were previously discussed by the last council. So in that 100,000 dollars, which is four parks, it's not just Hyde Park, it's four parks, but there is money there if you, if we organize that meeting and we find out what the folks want, and then we can move forward with that, yeah.
So I actually can do that, I actually made a list and have some things ready, so I'll, I'll get a group together.
Oh, share that, I'll take, I'll be happy to look at the list and.
Alright, thank you.
Happy to work with the residents too, if you have that, so.
Thank you, alright, thank you.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, through the chair, I have reached out a few times on this through email just to clarify, but wanted to bring this up for Longbrook, the repairs that were done there, I think there was bonding previously, and I don't know that all of that was spent. Is, is there still funding available for projects in Longbrook from that prior bonding?
There is still funding available for projects, I've been just holding it close to the vest, because we've come across a couple of issues at Longbrook that I think we're going to be looking at some future repairs to the splash pad, which is heavily used, so that's.
Is that going to go through?
What I've been holding on to it for, just because we've had to replace, before it could even open this season, we've had to replace some pumps, we've had to replace the, the hand signal that turns on the, the different apparatuses there, and some other issues, but we're thinking in the off-season, we may have to dig a bit deeper and make some other sizable repairs.
Is that something that the Longbrook Park Commission can be kept in the loop on as that goes?
We will, when, you know, when we get a little bit closer, right now, we're, you know, we've got it operational, we are making those repairs and kind of using that funding that's there to make those repairs, so it's operational on a daily basis. We don't know what we're looking at till after the season is over, and we investigate a bit deeper on, you know, what kind of major repair do we have to make so this thing runs seamlessly, and we're not there making these smaller repairs.
Okay, the, thank you. The other question through the chair, especially with the size of this bonding package and where interest rates are at, I remember through sort of the budget cycle, it sounds like there was still ARPA funding remaining in the range of 600,000, is any of that being considered to use to bring this down even a little bit, because it is a, a pretty big cost? Do we have a sense of where that remaining ARPA funding is going to be going?
Yeah, no.
Good, Mayor Huike.
Not until you all agree with that this is the path you want to go forward, and if it is, then with some of that ARPA funding, depending on some of the things we discussed earlier in the previous meeting, we may be able to utilize this to buy down some of the expenses, especially the big ones, the 1.1 million, I mean, we've bought equipment with a, a big tranche of ARPA money four years ago, so.
Mr. Effraye?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Renee, thanks for being here today, I just had a quick question, it's going to be on page six, I don't know if you have our agenda? Yep, and it's specifically under Public Works, and it's parks golf cart replacement, 80,000. I just wanted to better understand, how big is this fleet, and like, what are the maintenance measures, and how many will we be replacing?
So there are 10 golf carts and two utility carts at the golf course. They are approximately 10 years old, and they are habitually in the mechanic's garage for repairs. It's time to replace them, they're used heavily, daily, they incur fee when they're used, so we lose revenue when they're in the shop and not being used, so it's time to replace them and put them back into the fleet, a, a newer, better version of what we have, because we've been band-aiding these for a little bit.
I, I have pictures in my office of all the carts, too, if you want to see them.
I just wanted to follow up, so with these carts, when people come use our, our golf course, we basically rent them out to patrons, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, there's a fee for everybody who wants to use a cart, regardless whether you're a resident or not, there is a fee for using the cart.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
One second, Mashik.
Sure.
Mr. Timniak, I know that I might be speculating with this question a little bit, but seeing the significant increases in the, in the planned capital improvement, are we seeing some of the aftermath of the uncertainties from 2020, 2021, and 2022?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, I'm seeing that same thing, I work for an engineering firm during the day, and I know we're all sick and tired of hearing COVID, but still, it, there's a, there's a cause and effect and a trickling out effect from what had happened.
You know, it sounds old here, but when I started my career, fire engines were 440,000 dollars for a pump, or now in this book, it's 1.1 million, you know?
And, and again, some of that is symptomatic of availability of materials in the, the post-COVID world.
Yeah, it's just, things are way more expensive, it's, I think, and, oh, side comment, I think a lot of towns are trying to figure out how to plan and how to cope with this moving forward in a more expensive world. Mental adjustments have to be made on what, what an item costs now.
Thank you, Mr. Timniak, Mashik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to Longbrook with the park improvements, so I guess one of my questions would be, when was the town aware that there were mechanical issues with the splash pad, was that after it opened, or before? Was it an anticipated cost issue?
No, it's not anticipated, we turned the splash pad on and we tested it out, and we found a few issues, and we made the necessary repairs, so it was operational on opening day, which was Memorial Day.
So with the repairs that were needed to be done, how much did that cost?
I, I couldn't give you that off the top of my head, I know we bought a, a couple of different parts to it, and I don't have it off the top of my head, I probably processed about a couple hundred invoices a week, so I don't remember.
Okay, we could follow that up with an email. And then in the actual CIP book, there's the description for Longbrook Park improvements for the lower pond dam wall repair, but I thought that was done last fall, so is it additional work that needs to be done, or?
They made the necessary repairs, we're waiting to make sure that they're all addressed and holding, we identified what we saw at that time, we also made some adjustments to the gate, we're waiting through, you know, just to make sure through the rainy seasons and stuff, that the, the adjustments that we made work, and that there isn't additional areas that need to be addressed. There were some that were pretty obvious, where the water was going, you know, seeping over into the walkway, that's where those adjustments, those repairs were made, but we just wanted to make sure that before we let it go, that there weren't more.
Thank you, and then the dredging, it seems like every year it gets pushed out another year, because it's, it is, it's a high, very expensive infrastructure need that the waterways need, so I think it's pushed out to 2026 in this book now. Is there anything in the foreseeable future of, you know, infrastructure grants or anything that would help the town so that that process could be started earlier? Because it's the same complaints every year, we just finally got some of our permits, but we're still waiting.
If I see something available, we'll apply for it instantly, like, it's, it's a, like, definitely.
Thank you.
Alright, any of the, go ahead, Ms. Whittam.
I just want to make sure Worcester Pond is in there too, because I had that noted, that it's 2026, 2027.
It's, yes, it's, it's there as well, but it's, you know, those also are complex because you need permits, and then there's the high cost of getting rid of the material that is pulled out of there, it's not just, you know, you empty the pond, you pull out the sediment that's down there, there's a lot, I mean, it's going to take us just to get permit to treat the pond, I mean, you have to go through all those organizations to get the proper permitting, and then you have to find somebody who can do it and who's going to process the materials safely, it's a big undertaking, and it's in the millions, and when you're looking at, you know, there's other infrastructure that is at the construction point right now, that needs to be funded now.
I understand, there's just a lot, there's not a lot of that kind of stuff in my district, and that's a major complaint over there, so if there's not a lot of other things going on, it would be nice to be able to do something for District Six, thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works Director or Mr. Timniak? Right, hearing none, I will. All right, hearing none, I will, uh, bring this item to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item, uh, two point four. Mr. Glad.
Mr. Chair, I move that item two point four, uh, sorry, I just lost my page here. Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of twenty-two million nine hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred fifteen-dollar bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for various public improvements and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purposes be approved, uh, and favorably sent to the town council.
Thank you, Mr. Glad. Is there a second? Second by Mr. O'Neill. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Wytham.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Connor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we're off the clock at seven ten. Thank you, everyone.